Okay, while we're waiting for that, I think I'm gonna get started because this intro is a bit lengthy that by the time we get through it, our board member will probably be here. So it is 5:03 PM on Monday, July 13th. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. All Wassa School District Board of Education meetings will be conducted as a virtual meeting due to an active emergency situation, COVID-19 pandemic, meaning that multiple board members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations through the use of communications technology, and that public access to the meeting may be arranged through the use of technology. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-415-655-0001, then dial the meeting room access code 133-298-4082, or through the virtual WebEx meeting, which you can find a link on the school district homepage. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may email cpeck@wassaschools.org with public comment in the subject line. Those messages received prior to the start of the meeting will be provided to the board president. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the meeting live by the Wassa Area Access Media on the Government and Education Cable Channel 981. Wassa Area Access Media also livestreams the meeting The meeting will also be available on the Wassa Area Access Media YouTube channel a few days after filming. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. For those individuals with disabilities, including individuals with visual or hearing impairments, as well as individuals who may have limited access to technology, please contact the Deputy Clerk Cassie Peck at 715-261-0505, or cpeck@wassaschools.org. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2 and Roll Call. Jim Boucher?
Here.
Cal Low? Cal is still signing in. Beth Martin?
Present.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roosh?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Tricia Zanker? Present. Alright, thank you. With that, Agenda Item 3, please stand if you are able for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Agenda Item 4, reading of the mission statement. It is the mission of the Wassa School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, public and student comment. I have a number of comments that we received since our last meeting where we could accept comment. From the looks of these, these have already all been sent on to the board. I will summarize them now for the public, starting in chronological order of receipt. On Sunday, June 28th, we received public comment from Dr. Jason Chan. This was in regards to reentry for the fall. He was sharing his concerns as a pediatrician and a parent of school-aged children, and had questions regarding, really, just what it looks like in the fall, and requested his email be entered into the public record. Some of those questions include, who is consulted in generating the plans? What's the plan when there is a positive COVID case in a building? What is the communication plan when there are positive cases? Their question, what would you consider Marathon County's level of community spread today? And, let's see, what is the plan for reassessing the situation as it evolves once school has actually resumed? Okay, next public comment was received from John Mossens. This was received on Sunday, July 12th. And this is in regard, this is in his capacity as WEA president. He's requesting that the stipends specified by Mr. Tess on June 29th would be dispersed as quickly as possible. We received a second public comment from John Mossens, again, in his capacity as president of WEA. And this is a note of gratitude from the Wassa Education Association as it relates to reopening and the decision for the fall, and highlighting that facts and science should guide decision and considering the health and well-being of all staff and students. Okay, other public comment. This is received today, Monday, July 13th, 11:49 AM. This was received by Heather Haddelstad. There is a very emphatic request that the schools are reopened five days a week with no mask requirement, including sports program, different sports programs. And finally, we received public comment at 2 o'clock today from Dan Stralow. This is also in regards to reopening for the fall. He is urging that schools are fully open physically, and that students are present physically five days a week. Also urging against a mask requirement. Also stating, love to see sports available again. And then the remainder of the email is different, cut-and-paste quotes from various sources. Oh, I did say this was sent by Dan Stralow. That's what the email says, but it was signed by Julie Stralow. So I'll correct that error. Okay, that's our public comment. Thank you, everybody, for submitting your public comment. Okay, on to Agenda Item 6. This is approving the consent agenda. I would like to seek, well, actually, first I would like to recognize donations to the district. This is listed within the consent agenda. Donations to the district in the last month include UMR, Yvonne Gunderson, Wassa Noon Optimist Club, Jean Zimmerman, and Gilbert Rival, Lanell Riggle, and Terry and Greg Schulte. So thank you to all of those individuals and organizations for your contributions and donations to the district. With that, I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda. And as a reminder, we are always looking for the 1 and 2 as a first and second. Beth Martin's 1. Okay, and I see Lance as a second. Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Is Cal? Let me check one more time if Cal is on yet. Okay. Yes, I was able to move her over as a panelist. Cal, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, finally. Well, this always happens to me for school board meetings.
We're doing the consent agenda, and it's your turn on the roll call vote.
Oh, then yes.
Okay, thank you. Beth Martin?
She did say yes.
Oh, she did? Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roosh?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Tricia Zanker? Yes. 9-0 passed. Okay, that motion passed 9-0, again, with great gratitude for donations to the district. We are moving on to Agenda Item 7, old recurring business, starting with Project Relaunch 2020-2021. We have an update from the administration in regards to progress made since the June 29th special meeting on this topic. Kathy, let me know when I can turn my mic on.
Go right ahead.
Alright, great. Can everybody hear me? Jim, I can see you. Can you hear me? Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me?
Your mic's off.
Alright, can you hear me now?
It indicates you're speaking. Any thumbs up?
Yep, thumbs up. You're good. Alright, thank you. Alright, so when we presented to you last time about Project Relaunch, one of the very, the biggest questions that we had is, how do we determine, or how do we give a recommendation? What is the criteria of our recommendation? So we talked about that. We looked at what some other school districts are doing. We currently don't have any in our area that have released any criteria that we could find. So again, we were going off of, you know, what we found in other places. We also went off of what some other school districts have done in some sort of other capacity when they've had large-scale things happen, and how they could determine if they were open or not. So when we're looking at criteria for Plan A, Plan A would be full reopening of schools. So that's our number-one go-to. That's what we want to do, is to fully reopen at the beginning of the school year. Our criteria that we've determined for that plan would be 20% or less students, or, I'm sorry, less than 20% student and staff absences. Then we could reopen fully. Of course, we're not gonna know that on the first day of school, but we will know how many staff we will have available at that time. So then what would put us into Plan B. And Plan B is that alternate schedule. So A cohort and B cohort weeks. Our criteria to launch that plan would be 20% or more students absent per building. So if we have 20 or more students, 20% or more students absent at Wassa West, then we would go into the alternate schedule at Wassa West. So then moving to Plan C, which would be fully virtual. We thought basing that off of our staff absence made the most sense. Because if we don't have enough staff at the schools, we can't have the students there. So that would be 20% or more staff absent per building, or 20 or more percent of subgroups of employees absent. So if we don't have enough bus drivers, if we don't have enough food services or custodial, we also would not be able to provide supports and services to students. Going down to the schedule, last time the board had asked, what would the schedules look like? If we fully reopen, it would be a Monday-through-Friday schedule. If it's an A/B cohort or alternate schedule, we would go to a Monday-Thursday schedule, with Fridays being virtual. And if it was a virtual, it would be a Monday-through-Thursday schedule with prep time for teachers on Friday. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Lloyd. Just a note to, a ration, part of our rationale for the four-day week is so that, one, we can get teachers collaborative prep time, but also it gives them an opportunity to reach out to students that are...
It looks like your mic is not on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Apologize for that. Just following up on Mrs. Lloyd's comments. It's been two weeks since we've been at a meeting. Just a little rationale behind the four-day week. We are talking about, if teachers have a classroom of students in front of them, that's really where their attention's going to be. And so we wanna carve out specific time for them to do collaborative planning with their colleagues, but also time to reach out to students who would be at home ill, or who are doing some, you know, flip learning or some sort of learning at home. So we wanna make sure we have dedicated time to support the students who are at home for whatever reason. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Those are the only updates that we have made to our plan thus far.
I have a question. So I have a question, and I suspect there's gonna be a number of board member questions, but this 20% seems rather high before action is taken regardless of the plan. So when we talk about, just hypothetically, here, Plan A, 20% of student and staff absences, what is, on the peak day in a building, for absences in a year? What percentage are we usually looking at in a typical school year? Where it's just, that's the highest amount of people that have been out?
Do you wanna talk about that with the flu season? Can everybody hear me? I'm looking for you. I'm not even seeing you on there, Kathy. It's way on the bottom. I gotta stop sharing.
Oh, and I muted by host. Oh, because you must have got signed in as an attendee.
Okay, so she won't be able to...
No, I'm just a panelist. And what do I have to do? Now just on you? Yep. Okay. Can everybody hear me? Thumbs up, please? Yeah, you're good. Okay.
We don't track it generally every day, as we do now, absences. But I would say about 5% absence is usual. It is not unusual during flu season to be up to 10% absence. Last winter, right before a winter break, we had two schools that had right around a 10% absent rate. And we were still, obviously, able to hold school. So we're thinking that if it starts creeping up towards 20%, that there likely won't be enough staff or subs available.
Could I respond to that a little bit, too? Another, just kind of support for the 20%. This was a percentage that was used by districts during the H1N1. I don't feel like that's not a pandemic.
Yeah, it was.
Was it? Okay, alright. And so that's kind of where the research showed, you know, that would be a logical starting point. And I would also say this would be a guideline. You know, if we hit 20% one day in a school, you know, we, you know, we were probably looking for trends. Maybe not just a single peak, because there may or may not be an accurate representation of the health of the student body at that time.
Jane, I see you have your hand raised. And also Lance, do you wanna go ahead with your question?
Me?
Sure, go ahead, Jane.
Okay, I have a couple of things. First of all, I agree, 20% is too high. I think we have to rely on what is happening in the state and county. Are our numbers going up? Are they going down? And of the kids that are absent and the staff, is it COVID-related or not? Is it they're all out for some other reason? You know, if the COVID numbers are going down and we have the regular flu that comes through, are we still gonna cancel school?
You have a raise.
Go ahead. We've talked extensively about that. We're not going to technically know why they're out ill. We can do our best to get information from the parents, because we, of course, wanna track that within our school system. But even a common cold when we come back will have some similar symptoms to COVID. So we're not going to be able to decipher what's COVID and what's not when it comes to absences, unless if we know for sure that somebody has it.
Can I jump in?
Yep, go ahead.
Another note, Jane, those are really good questions. Part of the struggle we had was, we're not able to find definitions. You know, for instance, when we first brought this to the board, we talked about minimal spread or moderate spread. And really, there's really no definition for it. We've reached out to the local health department. They aren't able to give us definitions. So in our opinion, we want to make a determination on data that we understand. We had talked about trying to measure the capacity of the COVID units, right? You know, local. We talked about trying to interpret the rate of spread. But as we've talked about, you know, when you look at the Wisconsin Hospital Association, you know, they say Marathon County is high activity, but they also say, like, Iron County's high activity, but they have five cases. So we don't know how to interpret that. And so in consultation with our nursing staff and Dr. Lamont, and you've seen some other comments from some local physicians, we think this is, I ask, for lack of a better term, a common-sense measure of, and something we can measure ourselves and not have to rely on outside sources to help us make that kind of a determination.
Jane, did you have any more questions?
I have a lot of questions about the whole going back to school thing about, if a teacher comes out with COVID and she's gotta be quarantined, what about her students? Now they've been contacted, are they gonna be quarantined? Are we gonna make our teachers use their sick leave for this quarantine? Or not? We're asking a lot of our staff that are next out there to come into school. We have a deadly pandemic going on.
So our Human Resources Committee is taking a look at all the different leave provisions, and that'll be handled on a case-by-case basis. That's not really something we can decide in this setting. But know that we are very concerned about the well-being of our staff and our students, obviously.
Lance, did you have a question?
Yeah, well, first, I like the change. I like the idea of planning to start with the kids in school. I think establishing those routines and getting kids in school to start with is a good idea. I also like the change that it's tied to, you know, we're gonna make our decisions based on how the virus is impacting our district students and our employees, as opposed to the county as a whole or other parts of the county. So I like that it have a little more solid definition of what we're going to do, and that it's tied directly to our staff and students. I really think we need to, and I'm sure you are, focus on what changes we can make to the quote-unquote "normal" school day in an effort to try to keep 100% of the kids in school, because there may be certain classes that we can't have because they pose a higher risk than other classes or certain activities. I'm sure you're looking into that. But when we talk about going back to school 100% normal, it's not really gonna be normal. It's, we're gonna do what we can, I assume, to try to keep it at 100% by eliminating, and limiting some of the more risky classes and settings. I do have a couple of questions. In terms of the 20%, and maybe it's just gonna be fluid, but are you thinking of that as a district-wide basis? Or could it be building by building? I have a couple of questions after that. Maybe you wanna address that first?
We would do it on building-specific, Lance.
Okay, and then regarding Plan B, are there gonna be more details coming to us later in terms of, you know, how that's going to work? I'm trying to think of how, you know, how a teacher would teach half their class online while also teaching half their class in person on Monday through Thursday. I understand there would be a Friday day to try to catch up with the online students, but you're probably gonna want them working on something on Monday through Thursday as well. And I, you know, I'm concerned that we, at some point in the year, we probably will have to go to that. And I'm worried that our teachers aren't gonna be able to do that, frankly. Because I saw what the impact was of teaching online, and it was, it was a longer, harder day than even the regular school day, which already is more than 40 hours a week. So to combine them both together, I'm concerned about that. So hopefully, that's something we're still looking into, so that we can, you know, rely on that in case it does happen.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Lance. So one other item that we wanted to share with you tonight and kind of get the board's blessing, if it were, you know we have some ESER funds from the federal government that support COVID-related actions. One of the actions we would like to take is to offer optional three days of training and collaborative planning for our teaching staff, and one day of training and collaborative planning for our classroom support staff specifically related to that situation. Whether it's the use of blended learning, where, you know, you're sharing materials for the students to do at home in preparation for the next week. So that's a direction that the education team is working on right now. And I would say, as we've talked about this, the rate of content coverage would decrease in the A/B week. Because as we said at the beginning, you know, if I've got a group of 20 students, well, 15 students, whatever I have in front of me, that's really my focus as a teacher. So it would not be 100% coverage. But I guess the ed team's kind of working on the details, and we can certainly bring that back to the board.
Okay, good. Because that's a big concern that I have, if we have to go to that. I also, just one other thing, wanted to reiterate something that Jane brought up at the last meeting, which I think is important. We really need to get away from this idea of rewarding perfect attendance and attendance, and, you know, power through it and come to work, even if you're not feeling well, because you can get through it, or any sort of guilty feeling for not coming into work and having to have somebody cover for you, or students linking issue power through it. You know, we just, we just have to change our mindset around that. People need to stay home, whether they're staff or students. They need to stay home if they have any symptoms.
Teresa's got it.
Thank you.
Beth has one, too. Can Beth go first? Beth, I see you have your hand raised. Could you go ahead with your question?
Okay, did I hear right? In that if a student is absent, you will not know if it's due to COVID or not? So we aren't gonna know which students may be tested positive for COVID?
The nurses are gonna be monitoring attendance daily, so we'll be watching the numbers. We are also asking all the attendance secretaries and in the elementary buildings, the building secretary, to ask parents what their child's symptoms are. We have a sheet already checked off, they can just check it off. This is voluntary information, we cannot demand it. But we are going to ask parents why they are calling their child in sick. So we should be able to get a pretty good idea of that. So that's for the kids who are not diagnosed. If a child is diagnosed, we will be notified by the health department, and they will tell us what we need to do. In general, if a student becomes ill and they've been in the classroom that day, the day before, we will likely need to shut down for one to two days in that building for deep cleaning. And, but that will be at the direction of the health department.
Oh, I see. That's why it's not in our school plan? Because the health department is calling the shots on those kind of situations?
Yes.
So it would be helpful for us to know when a kid tests positive that this is what the protocol could be? Because that's really helpful to know, because people are gonna ask questions about that. And next, what is the role of testing? If a student obviously has the symptoms of COVID, is there any way we can compel them to get a test? Or is testing free? Or what's the role of testing? And when can a student come back if they're diagnosed with COVID? Same?
If a student becomes ill at school, first of all... If a student becomes ill at school, uh, first of all, I'm going to back up just a second. We're not going to be testing temperatures on every children. A lot of children don't even have a fever with COVID, but we're going to have the, ask the teachers to just kind of eyeball every child as they come into the door. Do, are they coughing? Do they look sick? Um, Ronnie knows anything out of the ordinary, anything at all. The teacher should err on the side of, oh, they look sick, get them out of there. Don't let them enter the classroom and we'll have them come to the health office to do a little bit more thorough exam of them, check their temperatures, see what's going on. If a child has a temperature of 100 degrees or more or is coughing frequently, they will have a mask put on them at that time and be taken to an isolation room where they're separated from healthy children in the health office and parents will be immediately contacted to pick up their child. Um, they will be directed to contact their physician, healthcare provider, and ask them to take them in for a COVID test. Um, that may be a couple of days before we get those results back. So again, if they are positive, then we'll know from the, the health department will let us know. Um, from that point on, the student, if they are positive, will need to stay home from school for 14 days. And then, um, they will need to, hang on, let me check my health services plan because we have a very specific health services plan. And some of your questions too, Lance, are in there about, um, let's see. So if a child is ill, oops, did I, um, missed a one? Um, if a child is ill.
Beth, can you repeat your question?
I'd like to see that plan because the school plan is very abbreviated. Now you're giving me a lot more information that's super helpful and makes it a little more clear.
That's what we're working on right now. We don't have that all day.
I think that would be helpful for us to know as we're making decisions.
Okay. So, um, everybody, tonight is just an update. The administration is, is working through this, but we're definitely going to get this very detailed information, um, soon so that we're going to be able to make the most informed decision. Um, but that, this is something that they're working on right now.
Um, I can just add, if a child is ill, we are, and, and again, this is, we have a draft plan, a draft health services plan that is far more detailed than what we're presenting in the outline. But the siblings will be required to stay home. Um, and again, we're directed by the health department throughout this whole thing. But you will get a, definitely a detailed plan of what is happening in the health services area.
Okay. Um, Teresa has a question. And then after Teresa, Pat McKee had his hand raised and I see Calo has her hand raised as well. Um, Jane and Beth, I see both of your hands are raised still. So if you have additional questions, just leave them raised and if not, please lower them. Thank you. Go ahead, Teresa. Make sure your mic is off. There you go. You're good.
Okay. Um, one of my concerns is a big core of our retirees are, are substitutes and that they're going to be at a health risk. I'm not so sure we're going to have adequate, um, um, substitutes to fill in the classroom. And I also think that we also need to let the community know that we may not be able to open the school in the fall on the first day of school. Some schools are now doing a nine-week delay. Some are saying the whole year already, um, depending on all their circumstances and what's happening. I think we've got to be fair to our community and say, listen, community, this is our goal. But if things don't change in our county and people don't start taking more responsible actions, we're not going to be able to open up because I'm assuming that the health department's going to say, it's too risky. We've got too many cases that are continuing to evolve and we don't have a handle on it. So just because we have A, B, and C, and we say, we, we really want to do A, I do too, but we may not be able to. So I think we have to also, I know you're working on it, but let the public know that it might not be possible. Um, and then I just, um, and I think I understand that if West had a lot of cases and we closed West for us five days or whatever is going to be the protocol, think how many families have children in other buildings that are impacted by the spread of virus in that one school, but we're only going to close that one school. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah. As long as we don't get any other direction on that. Yes, as long as we don't get any other direction on that from the health department. So that is one of the questions we want to ask them because we have a lot of traveling staff. So Kathy and I are meeting with them again on Thursday. What does that look like if we have a music teacher at three of our buildings and one of the buildings gets COVID? Then are we all exposed to that or all three of those buildings? So those are some of the more detailed scenarios that we need to sift through with the partnership with the health department.
And then, then my last question is, is the health department giving you any guidance about masks for elementary children? Because I know we spoke two weeks ago that we weren't going to require elementary children to wear masks. And as I hear reports from around the country, um, that's not what a lot of communities are doing. And in Shorewood, the whole, um, community there has to wear a mask anytime that they're outside, I mean, anytime they're in a building. So I'm just wondering what the health department is saying about masks in our elementary kids?
The health department really isn't giving any specific direction to us at all. Essentially, they're giving us all the guidelines, the education forward guidelines from DPI, the CDC guidelines, which are essentially recommendations. We recommend this, we consider, consider this, but there are no real mandates or direction. At this point, the health department is not telling us to open, nor is it telling us to close. We're pretty much on our own. We are supposed to check the data for ourselves and figure it out on our own.
Oh, that's good and scary. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, comment on that. Um, in, in response to several of these questions, this might be a good time to let the board know, um, and the community, um, that the Wausau School District and the Everest School District, um, Chamber of Commerce, uh, mayor's office, uh, potentially health department, we will check with them, trying to come out with, uh, a statement about, yes, we want schools to open, yes, we want businesses to open. And the more, uh, you know, we're asking respectfully, of course, just, um, as, as organizations in the, in the, in this community, asking people to comply with some of the, the health measures, um, the social distancing, the hand washing, the mask wearing. Um, so just as a note, we are, we are trying to, um, you know, give some persuasion in, in that direction as well. I might also add that, um, you know, a number of the districts in this area, Everest and Wausau in particular, because we obviously share the same community. We will be, uh, kind of cooperating in these detailed plans. Um, matter of fact, we, I shared the, the 20% um, kind of, um, standard uh, in late, late last week and, and they are likely to go the same direction. Um, cause as I mentioned at the beginning, we just aren't getting direction, you know? Um, so really it's going to be up to this body to make a decision about what's best for our kids and our staff. So for instance, as Mrs. Miles asks about masks, if this board, um, wants to see our students wearing masks, simply say the word, we'll make a policy and we'll do that. I don't know if I'd recommend it. I would want to, you know, discuss that with you. There's some equity issues, um, there's compliance issues. Um, but that, again, if there's something that this board wants to see, then, then we should take some definitive action on that and, and pin that down somewhere in the plan.
Keith, I'm sorry, Keith. Pat, do you want to go ahead with your question, please?
Sure. I'm not, I'm the best one to answer this, but I'm interested to know, have we reached out to or have they reached out to us, but the vendors that we get our curriculum from, um, have they done any development or advancement of their online curriculum so that if we have to go that direction, we can increase the fidelity of the virtual experience?
I think I can. I'll start speaking to that and if, uh, if one of the members of the ed team wants to chime in. Um, I would say, no, they haven't, Pat. And frankly, the, um, i- the, the, uh, the way we feel, the, the best way to move forward is to help our, our teachers know how to deliver the curriculum we have, you know, with, with some, uh, with some of the, um, you know, blended learning skills or some of the flipped classroom skills. That's where I would start my answer. But I don't know if Chris or John or Andrea, Jennifer, I won't put you on the spot just yet since you just got here. Um, anybody else want to add to that?
So Pat, I would say that, um, there have been, and really truthfully since March, since the closure started back in mid-March, um, many of the, um, publishing companies that we purchase curriculum resources through have made enhancements to the online portions of the curriculum that we have access to. Um, they continue to make those enhancements. So I think the short answer to your question is yes, to a degree. Um, but no one has, has positioned themselves to say, we are fully preparing you for fully online instruction. So they've made enhancements to the online components of the resources that we have access to, but no one has stepped up and said, we have now positioned you to be fully virtual.
Have, well, it sounds like we haven't, but I mean, isn't that a position that we could advance with, you know, a, whatever our, our vendor happens to be, um, regarding the, the, you know, if it's MAFS or ELA or what have you. I mean, if, if they're not coming to us with that, they made some enhancements. I mean, you know, could we go to them and say, hey, this is really what we would, you know, based on the feedback we're getting from our staff, here's what would really help the virtual experience. Take a proactive approach rather than waiting for them.
Yes, we could do that. We have not, we have not reached out to them individually. As I said, many of our vendors have reached out to us and just they've been sort of casually sharing the enhancements that they've made, but we have not reached out to them with pointed directives in terms of saying, if you could create this, that would be helpful. We certainly could start to compile that kind of list and prepare that, those kind of materials to ask those questions though.
Definitely. It just seems like the, a, a better approach than waiting to see if they deliver what we need. Let's tell them what we need and ask them to do it. Well, thank you.
Con, did you want to go ahead with your question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I, I agree a lot with, you know, with some of the things that Teresa said, um, and I would be also interested in, you know, seeing a lot of those online enhancements also. So, um, great reactions and questions so far. I also have one comment. Um, so I feel as if, um, the focus here is, is very reactionary. I mean, um, Plan B is a reaction to, you know, 20% to more students absent from our building. And I'm really worried that, um, you know, if, if we do get to that level, um, it's just a domino effect. Um, and so I would, I would like to see something more proactive, um, instead of, um, something that, um, be a reactionary plan where it might be too late already. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I have a number of questions. Oh, sorry. Bob's, is Bob speaking?
Yeah. Part of an answer to Con's question, we aren't doing a lot of that. We've got the universal approach during green, we're doing this, 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 this. During green, school might look quite a bit different. The bus ride might look quite a bit different. Recession, sports, things will look different while we're in green. That is proactive. Uh, and even if we're in yellow, we're going to be proactive to avoid red. So there are plenty of things that we're doing that are proactive that don't appear in the plan. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. So, um, I have a number of, of questions, just things I'm going to kind of fire off. The, the first one being, um, when does the administration and the community and staff need the decision from the board? Because, um, right now we are only slated to meet this time this month and I, I believe, I don't think we have.
Twenty-seven.
Oh, we do have, okay. About that, um, meet once in July. Okay. So, um, I don't know if that's going to be the 27th. We're going to have that fully detailed information for a board vote. Uh, otherwise then we're getting into August. Um, but it, that's just something on my mind. When are we going to actually come to a firm conclusion and have a lot more details? Um, some of the things that I am concerned about when we, we look at the first option and fully reopening and social distancing and the details needed there. You know, the classrooms, um, that have 28 students and how are we having six feet apart and what is that going to look like? Um, masks, uh, and the, the proposed mask optional for students, which I know, um, is, it's not going to be popular to have a discussion on masks for everybody, but I think we have an obligation and a duty to have that discussion, um, with more details because, um, uh, you know, we're requiring or we'd be requiring our staff to wear one. And why? Because that's protecting everybody else. And we have it optional for students to wear one and that's protecting the other students and, and the staff. Um, but I, we, I believe that we need to have that discussion, um, in much more detail. I did hear from a teacher in a different district where their, um, their district is going with a mask optional. And the fear that I heard from that teacher, um, is something that, you know, I think that the science is there and says, this is how you reduce the spread of contagion, masks, six feet, social distancing, six feet, six feet apart. So I believe that we do have to have that discussion, even though it may be unpopular with some people. Um, the health and safety and, and the data and the evidence say, and this is not, this is not some new practices, this is, you know, hundreds of years old practice, um, to prevent the spread of contagion. So I would like to see more discussion on that. Um, and, you know, we just don't have that information. Like Dr. Hilt mentioned, he would bring more information, they'd bring more information on that. Um, but just other things too, that I think we're going to need more information on, you know, what is recess going to look like? Uh, maintaining that social distancing. We are hearing from so many people, so many parents that are saying the lost socialization, but if you can't, can you still do partner work? Can you still work in small groups? Um, what, what is recess going to look like? Um, ventilation, this is another thing that's so important. And I know, um, a lot of our buildings, you know, the windows, are they, are, are we going to be able to have them open? Um, are they sealed? Is that something? Um, you know, just things like, uh, the high schools and closed campus. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if they're closed campuses now for lunch, but are we, is our focus to reduce risk? Uh, and when you leave campus, you could be exposing yourself to risk that you're bringing back to, to school that day. So I think that's something we need some more clarification on. And then something Lance said earlier, something that we talked about, um, in the last meeting was just that what some different classes are going to look like. Um, especially music class, um, FIAID, um, any, those, those classes in particular, we heard from a science teacher with, and labs, you know, what is that going to look like? So there's so many questions that we're getting that we need clarification on just so we have a better understanding. Um, and I don't know what, what is most useful to administration in regards to these questions? You know, it, cause we, we have these discussions in public, but, um, you know, what would be the most useful on all of this? Cause there's just so many specifics.
So what I hear are, is a board interest really in, in the, in the total detailed redesign of, of, of education during a pandemic. And, um, really what I think we're looking for now is, you know, we, we've presented all of the information we have. You know, we've talked to our local medical experts. We've looked at, you know, national, uh, you know, public health research. Um, at this point, it's really a decision, you know? Um, I think we would say, uh, there's a few questions that we do want to look at, you know, particularly around some of those, those classes that, and Mr. Trollop asked about and you, President Zunker. Um, but if, you know, I, I don't know if, if this body is interested in hearing every detail of every 13 subcomponents of the plan. Um, or, uh, do you say, hey, here are the, the three things we absolutely, you know, want to see in this plan and the rest, you know, will be, uh, you know, worked out by the practitioners, you know, at the building level. Um, so what, uh, what's the board's pleasure, I guess, around, around that, that level of, of detail? Or what are the things, what are the non-negotiables that the board's looking for? Or what are the things, what are the non-negotiables that the board's looking for?
I think we still need more details. And I didn't highlight one of the things that Lance brought up earlier too, was just when we go to the second option, what does that look like for burdening on our teachers? You know, are you going to have paras in there that are working with the students physically while the teacher's doing the virtual lessons? Are we going to have an increase in subs? And I have questions about subs too. Teresa asked about substitutes. Does it make more sense to have building assigned substitutes because of the decrease of exposure? I mean, subs are going in all the different buildings. And I guess another question I have, there's so many questions, is when we talk about just moving to virtual for one school because of the 20% mark in that school, what about all the siblings of students that, that are in that school? Or not even just siblings, but people in the same household that attend other schools? How is that going to be a factor if at all? So I think there's still a lot. And to make an informed decision, which it's not an action item tonight anyway, I think we still have a ways to go. And I guess other board members that want to weigh in on, on what you feel you need to make an informed decision, this would be at the opportune time, please.
I think the unfortunate reality is that, you know, as, as much science is involved with all this, the actual decision-making process is maybe an oxymoron, is going to be more of an art than a science. And I say that because of all the variables in it, scientific or otherwise, that change so frequently. So I, I think that our role as a, you know, policy-making body, if you will, needs to continue to be just that. We, we may all have opinions on, you know, what we do about each one of those subcomponents. But at the end of the day, developing and executing, you know, an overall plan, I think is where we give our, our green light or ask for some changes. I, I don't know and I don't think we would want to be there for every detailed step in the way because, you know, administration will never be able to implement anything if that's the case.
Jane, did you want to go ahead with your question?
I had a couple of comments and a couple of questions. First of all, back to Beth, we probably will find out more about who has COVID through the contact tracing that they've been doing to find out where this is coming from. And I also worry about the social distancing when we're having, if we're talking about being fully open. And masks, that's one of my great deals. Everyone has to wear a mask. My four-year-old niece is in daycare. And the three and four-year-old kids, they were explained why they wear masks and how to do it and what the procedure is. And they wear them just by a couple of reminders here and there. And I read somewhere where they're talking about, maybe you should do rewards for masks? No. It's just something you do to protect everyone else. And to make it optional, the problem is, is the people that refuse to wear masks or won't wear them are the people that go to large events, that go to restaurants, that go to big family gatherings. It has to be a mandatory. And I also read today in an article that one in four teachers would be considered at risk with other health issues like diabetes, obesity. We have to keep that in mind. And if we talk about the CDC having just guidelines, well, they have just guidelines because they're being prohibited from putting out mandates. It's best to look at what the CDC says as mandates. And then I was wondering about the high school classrooms. Why can't we do the high school classrooms if we do that every other week? Where the kids virtually are in the classroom, they're watching the teacher give that lesson instead of giving them some other thing to do? They could just be in the classroom like they do in college. And that's, that's all I've got for right now. Thanks.
Lance, I see Lance has his hand up, Kat has his hand up.
Yeah. On this particular issue, I, I agree with what Pat mentioned. And I think that the board's role is this overall policy, you know, this issue of, you know, do we agree with sort of the general standard of the 20% framework that's been presented to us, which I like much better than the one before. And I think mostly when it comes to what then is the district doing with the students in class and what changes are being made to try to make it as safe as possible? I think 99.9% of that is, it's either administration and individual teachers to work on, not necessarily the board's role. We're not going to be involved in a modification you made to the passing time at John Muir any more than we ever involved in the passing time decisions you made before this. There may however, be a couple of big ticket items that you feel like you do want board input on that maybe are just too emotional or just too, there's just too much on both sides of it to take it on yourself, whether it be masks or whether it be canceling a certain class or something that you may want to come to us. But 99% of it, I think, is just giving us the information so that we in the public can hear what is being done in the buildings to make it as safe as possible. We're not necessarily voting on all of those different things. You're just informing us, this is what we're doing to try to make it as safe as we can. And then the other issue, I want to follow up on Teresa's comment. I just want to make, make sure that I understand and, and as far as was represented so far, the plan would be, based on what I'm reading, that if things were the same in September as they are now, the plan would be we're opening school with, with 100% of our students in class on the first day. Unless something drastically changed, where we had 20% of our teachers ill, that would, which would be an, you know, an incredible change compared to what, what we have now in the community. But I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly because I do think it's important for us and for the public to know what the plan is, assuming that there isn't a drastic change between now and September, if things are the same as today.
I can speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah. So yes, what you just said is accurate. If, if nothing drastically changes, our plan would be to have schools fully open. And that means, you know, based on that, that we would not have six feet of distance between students. And that, that would be consistent with the recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatrics, the study that we've been using as a, as one of our foundational pieces to create this plan. You know, then the, you're right, you know, the, the community wants to know what's going to be different, right? And what's, what are the cleaning protocols? And are we going to have one-way hallways? And are we going to have, are we going to have masks, right? And how are they going to, how are the students going to eat lunch? And, and all those kinds of questions. But yeah, I think you bring up a good point about if we opened today or, you know, September 1, students would be three feet apart, not six. And again, the, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation, as well as many of our local physicians who've reached out, have, have spoken to that being a reasonable source of information.
Did they also comment on the use of masks? I can't remember if it was that study. One of the things that we saw was more in favor of masks for the secondary students than for the elementary students because of the issue of continuously touching the mask, which may actually be worse than not having a mask. If you're continuing to touch the mask with your hands that have actually touched the virus. I don't remember if it was that study or another. But obviously those are all the types of things that, that you're thinking about when deciding what to do with masks.
At this point, at this point in our draft plan, we are recommending masks for second, all secondary students as well as teachers. And then for elementary students optional or at parents' discretion. And again, that's kind of based on what you said. Kids, we, we want children to be able to put them on themselves, take care of them themselves because somewhat defeats the purpose if an elementary teacher has to go over and touch a child's face, mask, whatever, and replace it. So touching it, the kid touching their face with the mask, that is our concern with elementary. But if the board decides that that's the way they want to go, we fully support that. But there are concerns that we have about elementary students and masks.
Beth and Jane, I see you both have your hands up. Beth, you want to go first and then Jane?
Sure. You cited the American Association of Pediatrics and they did walk that back a little. They, they said, yes, we want all kids to be in school, but only if we can do it safely. And I just want to, I'm sure you've talked about this and we all know it. I mean, I've been living and breathing this for weeks, just reading every single article and watching every report. But we know a lot more about this virus than we did in March. And we know that it travels through respiratory droplets. And we know that there are proven methods for controlling the spread. And those are wearing masks, distancing and good hand hygiene. So I really feel like even, I'd like to know more details about the plan so that I can feel comfortable as a board member. I don't have to know every detail, but I'd like to know some overarching things that we're doing as a school district to keep everyone safe, both teachers and students. If teachers know that everybody's going to be wearing a mask and that the droplets won't travel further than two inches with a mask on, that's going to give them a lot more comfort in coming into the classroom and coming back to work. People are scared. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, I saw a, a news story about air purifiers that you can buy for your house. And they, even though the COVID germ is very, very tiny, it travels inside these larger water droplets. And air purifiers can catch those in their filters. And they can change over the air in a classroom, for instance, five times an hour. Now, if I were teaching in a classroom with a whole bunch of little kids and especially if they didn't have masks on, it would make me feel a lot more comfortable if I knew that that air was turning over. We live in Wisconsin, we're not going to be able to open the windows. And in many of our schools, they're older, they don't have good ventilation systems. I'm just putting that out there as an idea that could be explored. And maybe the special funding for COVID would, could be used to at least try those in some classrooms and, and see if that's a viable idea. I think they're probably a couple hundred dollars a piece. But, and I think the filters get changed once a year. But cleaning the air, if we know that those droplets hang in the air, would be super helpful for making sure that our classrooms are as clean and safe as possible. So yeah, I'd like to know a few more details, not every single detail, but I'd like some broad overarching safety measures that we're doing as a district so we can make parents and teachers and students feel safe.
I think that's a good point and not only feeling safe, but also, you know, if the masks keep our teachers healthy, that keeps our school open. And so if, if everybody understands and agrees that what we really want is to have 100% of the students in class and that's what all of our, that's what most of the parents are telling us, well, these are the steps that, they might not be great, they might be inconvenient, but it's going to increase the chance that we can keep 100% of the kids in school for more days than not. And so each of these steps, yeah, they're not great, but it's going to keep our teachers healthier. So we're not going to be over that 20%, hopefully, and that's going to keep our schools open. I just think it's important to, to do whatever steps we can to keep the kids in school. I'd rather have a different-looking school with 100% kids there than go back to a regular school for a very short time and then even have the kids all out again.
And I think you have to, I can't want to bring everybody together and then just wait for the numbers to go up. You start with, that's the proactive part in the way I'm seeing it. And I don't know everything, but I've watched a lot of stuff and read a lot of stuff and those are the simple things I know we can do, so.
Tricia, sorry, have we digressed to the point now where we're just continuing to agree on the same things?
No. So one of the things I was going to weigh in on is Keith had mentioned that for a discussion regarding mask policy specifically, they did want to bring more information. So I think we should give them that opportunity. And then Kathy mentioned the same as well. One thing to highlight too, when we do have that discussion at a subsequent meeting is, any of these things that we talk about doesn't mean they're going to be for the entire year. You know, maybe the first month proves to be effective for a, a mask policy or something. So, but we'll, I think we should have that discussion when they have had opportunity to bring that material. And I don't know if there's other questions that board members have. I think that we are all just, you know, these questions that are being asked are so that we can make the most informed decision. You know, if I'm, the things that I asked, I don't think are, are, you know, I think I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to ascertain the health and safety aspects here, like we all are. And some of that might just be more specific than normal because we are in a pandemic and we are making a decision. And there are people that are getting sick and people that are dying. And so there are going to be more specific questions in regards to how we reopen this district. Does anybody else have questions on this?
Jane, okay.
I, I just, I just wanted to say that the American Association of Pediatrics, whatever the name is, they are not specialists on pandemics. Dr. Fauci is. He says six feet, the number is six feet. This, and we don't really know how this affects kids because kids are one of the groups that really has been pretty well isolated. But we do know that when kids, when anyone that has this is asymptomatic, it can cause, still cause permanent brain damage and permanent lung damage. And we really need to keep the distancing in the program. Thanks.
Teresa, go ahead.
My last comment is, I really feel we have to involve the community in the three things that keep us safe. And I don't think we have buy-in in this community. And we need the chamber and all of the groups to say, listen, it's imperative our kids come back to school. But if you go out into many places in this community, no one is wearing a mask, they're not social distancing, and they do not think it's important. And I think we've got to get that message to them. People, you've got as much responsibility as we as school board members. And I hope my fellow school board members, when they go out in public or a place where a mask could be worn, they're wearing one and setting a good example. But it, I don't hardly get to go anywhere. But my husband, the spy, is out and he comes home and reports that 85% of the people don't have a mask on. And last comment is Menards requires a mask. And if you don't have one, it costs you a dollar. And it hasn't hurt their business at all. So we really, as a board and, and our administrators, have to get more of the community on board that these three things will keep our schools open and healthy and safe. And I don't think we're getting that word to the community. So it's important that we all do our part. And that's why you got this little note from Dr. Hostetler about how to keep a mask safe and clean. Because I told her, I said, you as a profession have to get out in the community and tell them how important it is to do these things. And in our office, there's a sign in every exam room, do not take your mask off. Here are the things you do to stay safe. And she's trying to do her part by making masks and telling her friends and neighbors what to do. But I don't think we're doing that. And we need to have everyone in our community be part of this responsibility. So I'm off my bandwagon and I won't make any more comments.
Anybody have their hand up? Yes, Jane and Beth. I see. And Lee Webster. Lee, do you have a question?
A comment. I have been very impressed with all the work that's gone into this. I think we're all concerned about what's the best interest of kids and families and staff, everyone involved in the community. I am also very concerned about the fear factor that's out there. Part of what we're doing today is providing reasonable reassurance to the community that we're invested and we are concerned about many of these issues. So I do think that we need to make that rapid as soon as this is assumed. And we need to be communicating to parents and others in the community the direction we're going and the extent that we're moving towards providing those safety factors involved. In addition, I am really concerned with the amount of mental health issues that are coming up. Because what's happened is there's been a panic epidemic that seems to be moving around. There's so much different information out there and so many people are... And so many people are carrying a lot of anxiety. And there's no way we can have that in families and in parents without transferring that to kids and especially our elementary school children. So among other things, I think that the sooner we make some good positive decisions, do some good modeling and make some. And really, maybe even do some educational things for parents that they can do to decrease the amount of anxiety in their children and reassure them that we're moving ahead in a positive way. That's my comment.
Okay, let's take two comments, and I have a comment. Beth, do you want to go ahead with your comment? Oh, okay, Beth. We, looks like we have no more comments.
Okay, okay, so at this point, I'm not sure if anybody has any further comments. I think that the administration has heard the concerns. They're going to come back with much more details. Not getting into the weeds, but enough details so board members can feel assured in making the most informed decision in the health and safety of the community. I know one thing, Keith, you had mentioned about this group message that is hopefully going to go out. But if there's a way that we can communicate just on behalf of the school district, if that's something that can be looked into, message going out to the parents, guardians about best practices, we want to open as safely as possible. I don't, maybe that opens a can of worms before the board's made a decision. But the sooner that people are in the community practicing all of the safety practices, the better. And the lower risk we are certain to have in the fall. So with that, I think we can move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, everybody. So we're still on Agenda Seven, on to B, Education Operations Committee Meeting. This is just summarizing what happened again at our last meeting. I know sometimes we go through these things and we have action items and it's not always clear to the public and to others that we actually went through items in great detail. This first is not an action item, but it was a presentation that was presented to the board regarding academic achievement and our AGR schools, their response to the COVID-19 crisis. Next, wave expansion. So this, again, is something that the board went through and asked questions on in regards to expanding wave. If there aren't any other questions on this, I'm going to move to motion on this right away, that we approve the contract addendum to add grades K through five to WSA area of virtual education, which is WAVE. And that means WAVE would now serve grades K through 12, beginning in the fall of 2020.
Jane Roche is one.
I see Lance is, okay, so we have a first from Jane Roche, a second from Lance Trollope.
Okay, Paolo? Oh, sorry, hold on one second. Okay, Paolo?
Yes.
Thank you. Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Myles?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Tricia Zuckerman?
Yes.
Nine zero passed.
Okay, the motion to approve the wave expansion passed nine zero. Okay, now we're on to the referendum project proposal. This does indicate action requested. So we will have an update on this proposal.
Thank you, President Zucker. We will not have action tonight, I apologize for that. As you recall, in the last meeting, we shared some feedback that the community did not support our initial referendum proposal. So we had gone back, created a couple more options with, you know, maintaining the neighborhood schools. Tonight, really, I just want to let the board know we're working with the task force. And today, we put out another, although we started, another public phone survey process, that 400 people, but very targeted on a neighborhood type of referendum. We'll bring that information to the task force next week. And while we do not typically have an Educational Operations Committee Meeting in July, we will this year on July 27th. And that referendum proposal would be one of the main topics, obviously accompanying the pandemic, the plans to reopen the schools in the fall. So I'd take questions if there are, but it's just a brief update on the process tonight.
Okay, I do not see any hands up. Last call for questions on that item?
Okay, expect a lot of questions on the 27th. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Eight, New Business, Education Operations Committee Meeting. So first item here, the annual academic standards. Paul Weber presented the 2020-2021 District Academic Standards. So this is an action item. And I just want to reiterate again, when we move through these action items, they have been addressed in a previous meeting in great detail. I am seeking a motion to approve academic standards in math, English Language Arts, Reading and Writing, Science and Social Studies, Geography and History for use in the 2020-2021 school year.
I see Jim Boucher is one.
I see a first from Jim Boucher.
Jane has a question.
Oh, was there a question?
Go ahead with your question, Jane.
I have a board referral that I would like the board to discuss about history.
Okay, that's not what's...
So if we approve this tonight, I would still like to come back to that.
Sure.
And I'm not really sure how to make a board referral because I've never done it before or asked for one. But I think we need to examine our history curriculum.
Okay.
Minorities, probably.
Okay, I'm hearing a share from Dr. Hiltz. Here, in the meantime, do we have a second?
Beth Martin, so Jim Boucher and Beth Martin.
Okay, so we have a first from Jim Boucher, a second from Beth Martin.
Okay, Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Myles?
Yes.
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Paolo?
Yes.
Tricia Zuckerman?
Yes.
Nine zero passed. Okay. Tricia, you're going to want to go back and do the graduation, you skipped graduation.
The pink note?
The pink note?
Oh, where is that here? What number is that?
It was supposed to happen before annual academic standards.
Oh, okay. Okay, so that passed nine zero. I'm working off a different agenda, so I have to, I have to move back to alternate graduation items. It was added as a post-it here. So I apologize for everybody following an updated agenda. I'm working off a different one. So we're going to move back, didn't mean to skip over that, talking about alternate graduation options.
Thank you. So as everyone's likely aware, we did not hold a graduation ceremony in the spring due to the COVID. We rescheduled for the first week of August in hopes that we could hold, you know, a more of a traditional graduation, something special to our students that involved the families. And clearly, we cannot hold a traditional graduation the first week of August. So we've been exploring options. And we would like to get some direction from the board. We, currently, we've been in conversation with the high school principals, little conversation with our pandemic committee. And this is what we're considering. There would be a graduation ceremony for students only in the gymnasium of East and West. Our smaller schools already have plans, they can easily social distance. So we're really talking about our two more traditional, comprehensive high schools. So we would propose that we have a student-only ceremony in the gymnasium where the students are social distanced across seats on the floor and even up into the bleachers. We have enough room to do that. There would be minimal staff, a couple of speakers, and then we would, you know, reenact the procession, if you will. Students would not go into the schools proper. They would enter from the parking lot and leave to the parking lot, trying to, again, to minimize that interaction. We feel that that would offer kind of an intimate opportunity for the graduating class to be together one more time. The downfall is it excludes families. We would livestream it, but they wouldn't be able to be there and be a part of it. Early in this process, we had discussed briefly an option of doing a graduation ceremony on a ski lift, where it's outdoors, they're social distanced. And so we re-explored that option. We had a meeting with Granite Peak. They're willing to do it if the school will help manage it, right? And what it would look like would be basically, you know, the students and their, and maybe four or five family members total, maximum, could be together. They could ride the lift, we could announce their names, we could have staff or others underneath, you know, kind of cheering them again from a distance. And then, and then they would basically come back around and we have to, again, work out some details. The idea, obviously, is to engage the family in that important ceremony. So that would be something we would do in the middle of the day for the families. And then the students would return to the school that evening for the semi-traditional graduation ceremony. You know, we've had a lot of conversation tonight about safe practices in a pandemic. We feel like we're meeting those criteria. We feel like we're giving the students something special and we're giving the families an opportunity to interact. Does the board have any suggestions or questions or concerns about that moving forward?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So the way that it's presented here in, with our materials on the website is first option and second option. But the way that you're presenting it now is both would happen. I have, I have subsequent questions too.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. When I wrote up that draft, that's where we were at, as we've continued to explore it. We have a number of concerns that if we do a ceremony on the lift, a number of people may not take part in that for various reasons, whether it's, you know, fear of heights or fear of being around other people. So we figured we would offer that as an option to supplement the non-family graduation ceremony.
Okay, just following up with some questions. Yeah, I do have concerns about that as well because it, we have students with disabilities. It's not as inclusive to do this chairlift option. It's ableist for those that can't do it. But if students do have an option that they can participate in, and this is some alternative, I guess my questions are, is there going to be a waiver that families sign? And are people going to be wearing masks on the chairlift? Because I have concerns about sneezing, coughing, and that moving chairlift.
Waivers, yes. Granite Peak does this fall ride all the time. It's, and they have waivers that are pre-made. Should note also, from a safety standpoint, if you're a skier, you know that in the winter, oftentimes you don't have to have that safety bar down. That is a requirement in this setting in the fall, and it would be for this event. Your second, oh, the masks, we didn't think they would be needed because they would space between each chair. So that's roughly 50 feet between chairs if we leave one in between.
Teresa, go ahead.
Is there a cost associated with it? And I'm also thinking about people arriving and leaving and social distancing. And the kids haven't seen each other for a long time and they're also going to be together that evening. I think one particular event is plenty because I was thinking about who's going to wipe down each chairlift after a family's been on it and all of the things that would entail. And then would be, would we be, I just, the staff that would have to be there to maintain those chairlifts to be safe because everyone would be touching everything. One of my friends said, have you thought about doing anything like Everest did? And I'm not really sure on the details, but they had a drive-by graduation and they were allowed two cars, the family and the graduate in one car, and then grandparents or another special family member in another one. And they drove and by and the parents felt involved and they got their diploma that way. I don't know a lot of details, but some of my friends have told me about that, that it was well-received. And I wondered if we should do something like that. But I'm not in favor at all of the chairlift idea.
So the cleaning piece, yes. When we spoke to Granite Peak, they said that cleaning the seats in between families is not difficult because they would, again, they would leave a gap. They stop to let one off, or they stopped to let them off and then they clean it and then another would get on. So there is, and that would be Granite Peak staff, that they said they have adequate staff to do that. There would be a cost, but the district could absorb it so the students could take part for no cost.
But what is the cost?
I'd like to, even as an op... Being with that, you know, it's not mandatory, but considering that, you know, these kids miss a very, probably a very special time in their academic career, if not in their life, presenting them with an option to have a different kind of memorable moment, I don't see anything wrong with that.
I'll answer Teresa's question with the cost.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat. And Teresa had asked a question about the cost. It would be $700 per day, so we'd need it for two days. So it'd be a total cost of $1,400. Jane has a vote, or I'm making a motion. Jim, optional, on paper, she's just writing.
Did any other board members have questions or comments?
I'll just follow up with additional comment. I can see how this is a fun option for students and they did not get the traditional senior year. And it's been difficult for everybody, you know, through this pandemic. But I have trouble supporting this as a district-sponsored event as well. I think if there are groups that get together, students who want to do it. But I really support doing the single inclusive option, however that streaming looks, maybe public access could also be there. We can Facebook Live to make it as inclusive as possible and as safe as possible. So that's my own personal position. I, it might be an unpopular one with the board, but I can't get on board with the ski lift option.
Same, I would just turn that around and say, what if, what if the student has a fear of crowds? What if they don't want to be, you know, part of that larger gathering and larger ceremony? The chairlift option with their family may be the right type of intimate setting that they need. So I think that could be just as inclusive as the email option.
Are you proposing that we add this every year then, Pat? Because this is how we typically have graduations. I mean, we're modifying it for safe social distancing, but...
A year? So yes, if we were to do this type of ceremony every year, yes, that would propose we add.
Okay.
And I did not list this as action, and I shouldn't.
Yeah, this is like, I think as long as it's optional and both, both types or both options are happy, and I'm okay with it. I think that, you know, I like going to graduations and I know some staff really like going, but the most important people to have there are the kids and their immediate family. Sometimes the family members are more excited about it than the students are. And so I think it gives an option for some families to take part and some more. And that's okay too. But I think as long as the district can do it and keep everybody distanced, I think it, I think it's a fine option.
I should have listed it for action, sorry. Can we do a straw poll?
Keep talking about WSA being a destination place. This is kind of a unique thing that would probably give us some really good publicity. Do I think that... too. I think it's exciting, and it would make you come out for a lot of the families.
I'm in favor.
I've heard from three in favor, three against. Four, I'm sorry, four in favor.
Okay, so we do not have an action item here, but we are giving administration guidance. And I think we've heard from four in favor.
We can do a straw poll without taking, without it being binding. We don't have to have action listed for that. It's basically, you know, for and against.
Okay, so how do we do that?
If you would just say, we didn't list it for action, but if we could just, if you're for it, yeah, if you're against it.
So is Cassie going to read everybody out?
Yeah, let's do it that way, so we can clarify.
Okay, so, because we didn't list it for an action item, but we want to be able to give the administration guidance, we're going to do a straw poll on this, just to kind of see where everybody's at. And I think what makes it easiest, given the virtual environment, is if Cassie just calls everybody's name, or, I mean, we can do thumbs up, thumbs down, that might work, but, because I don't think we need vocal for a straw poll, do we?
I don't necessarily need it, no, I just...
Okay. Maybe, is it easiest to just do thumbs up, thumbs down?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So I'm going to do mine here. Looking at board, okay, we've got one, two, three.
Has not voted.
Four.
Oh. Well.
One. Okay.
Is it five, four?
It looks like six, three.
Six, three?
Yeah. Okay, so that should provide administration with the guidance that they need to proceed forward and have an update for us.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are back on agenda item eight, moving to item two. Well, actually, it must be new item three.
Right.
Okay, sorry about that. And this is Neola policies. So we had the proposed Neola update, some district-specific policy changes, went through those in great detail at the education operations committee meeting. So I am seeking a motion to approve the attached policies as they were presented and voted on at the last meeting, at that meeting.
Can I make one note?
Dr. Hiltz does have one note for us.
At the last meeting, Mr. Trollop had asked about a policy that we currently did not have, and that was a mistake on my part adding that, so we removed it for consider, from consideration from this set of policies.
All right, thank you for that. Do we have a first and a second? I see Lance has a second.
Beth Martin's a first.
Beth Martin has a first, okay.
Lance Trollop's a second, okay.
Okay, Pat McKee?
Sorry, Pat McKee, hear you.
Pat McKee? Pat McKee?
Yes.
Thank you. Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
No.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Trisha Zuckert?
Yes.
That's eight, one. Okay. The motion to approve the Neola policies passed eight, yeah, eight to one. Okay, now to July startup of extracurricular activities. At the education operations committee meeting, Paul Weber and secondary activities directors presented an update on the July start of those activities. I'm seeking a motion to approve the extracurricular updates as presented.
I don't know if they heard you, Trisha.
Jane's talking, I think. Jane, can you please repeat what you said?
I was just wondering, what exactly are we voting on? I have a real hard time regarding the board vote.
This was that statement, right?
This is the statement.
I'll pull it up, and I will share my screen. Just one moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It was that statement. We spent a great deal of time on that in the last meeting. Are you able to see it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I remember now, because I wanted the CDC included in this.
Okay, so do we have a first and a second? Sorry, Cassie has shared her screen, so we can't see.
I just pulled it out.
First and a second on this item. I see a first from Jim, second from Lee.
Lance has something.
Lance, did you have a question?
I do, yes. I'm in favor of the statement, but I have a question about just how we're applying it. Are we, are we currently treating all sports the same? In other words, Meriden County is labeled high. Are we telling all sports that they can't go forward right now? Or are we tailoring it to what the particular sports are? Because, you know, for example, we have golf, where you can do an entire practice and match without ever being within six feet of each other or touching the same thing, versus soccer, you're not going to play a game without touching each other. But I'm being told that our, that all of our sports are basically on hold.
No, they're able to practice outdoors, they are not able to practice indoors right now. So I'm not... Yeah, I'm not sure, Lance, which athletics you're referring to, but right now, according to WIAA guidelines, we are still able to have practices with groups of 10 and under as long as they're following all protocols within WIAA guidelines. But we are still in high risk. Are we still in high risk, Kathy? Yeah, we're still in high risk right now, as of this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Jane, did you have something?
Yes. I don't know, how, how do you practice football and maintain a six-foot distance with a mask on?
They're just training.
Yeah, they're just training right now.
Yeah. They're just training at this point.
Are they coming in contact with each other? Are they sharing equipment?
No, I think they're doing conditioning in small groups.
See, and that's my problem with not having the CDC included in the lineup of who we are listening to. CDC are the professionals in pandemic, and we're excluding them, hoping that these other organizations will pick up the essentials.
Can you pull that statement back up?
Okay.
I'm against this policy.
We're pulling this statement back up. Guided by national associations and state and local government agencies. And the discussion that we had on this is, we could really get into the weeds if we start listing every entity, and then what if there is a conflict, for whatever reason, between a local government agency and the CDC? So we did spend a great deal of time on this, and we have a first and a second on this. So can we move with the roll call vote on this?
And the CDC is clearly being consulted, referenced.
Go ahead. Did you want to, did you want to point that out? Go ahead.
So the CDC is involved in this. WIAA was there in contact with them and the health department every single day. That's how they, that's how they determined the guidelines, that's how they changed them moving forward. So WIAA is the entity that came out with the guidelines, but CDC and DHS helped create those guidelines.
Were there any other questions? Okay, I will commence with the roll call vote. Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
No.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Calo?
No.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Trisha Zuckert?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to agenda item nine, committee updates, board referrals, there are none. Agenda item 10, board member professional growth and development report. Do any board members have any...
There was none. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of liaison report.
Do any board members have any professional growth and development to report for the month?
Yeah, this is length, one thing to share. I attended the Forecast Five webinar, and a lot of it was, it was about returning to school amidst the pandemic, and a lot of it was things that we discussed, specifically talking about, you know, the digital divide and access to Wi-Fi and how that impacts different students. But I also thought it was really interesting, they talked about just the differing executive ability between students, and then a lot of the problems they were finding from students learning online wasn't necessarily getting online, it was just the executive thing of planning your day and organizing, and when everything has been organized for you through your whole life, through your whole school career, now all of a sudden you have a plan, went to do this, went to do this, went to... And they talked about how we've got to be real careful that we're doing everything we can to take that away. That's an important skill for kids to learn, but it's probably not properly reflected in a math grade. Math grades should be based on their math, not based on how good they are organizing their day. And I just thought that was, it was interesting, an interesting take on it that we haven't really discussed in the past.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lance. Any other board members?
Is this where I ask for the board referral to work on our history for a field?
So then we'd have to put that on an agenda item with information for the board to discuss that, to move forward.
We could do it on the 27th, right?
I think it's a regular meeting, an agenda item.
Yeah, it's today's meeting, but it needs to be submitted ahead of time, so it's noticed for a discussion. Yeah.
Right, so we would need that information for the next, the next regular meeting. Okay, it doesn't sound like there's any more board member professional growth and development. Moving on to legislative liaison update, and that will go to Cal.
Unfortunately, I do not have an update for today.
Okay, then we will move on to agenda item C, superintendent commentary, Dr. Hiltz, is there anything?
There is. You may have noticed four new faces, four brave new faces are with us tonight, and while we would certainly prefer to introduce them in person, this is the first official meeting of our, four of our new directors. So I just want to introduce them, and they just kind of wave, so at least people can see their name and their face. First would be Mrs. Tabitha Gundrum. She is our new human resources and employee relations director. Tabitha has a lot of really valuable experience and insights, and she comes to us most recently from the Middleton Cross Plains District. So we're glad to have Tabitha with us. Did you wave, Tabitha? There she is, all right, thank you. Wendy Cartledge is our new special education director. She comes to us with a lot of experience as well. Most recently, she was the special education director at CISA V. And a fun little fact, she and our pupil services director grew up near each other, so. Third is Dr. Jennifer Rousher. Are you, there she is. Jennifer is our new director of secondary education. You saw, you may, if you logged in early, you may have seen that she and Beth Martin know each other. Jennifer used to work for, in curriculum for a while at DC Everest. She comes to us most recently from the Plymouth District, where she was a high school principal. And lastly, would be Diana White. There's Diana waving. And Diana is also local, grew up locally here. Fun fact, Mrs. White had one of the best math teachers in the entire state, who also happens to be on the screen right now. And Diana comes to us from the world of media, so we're glad to have all four of them. We've already been really impressed with their experience, their outlook, philosophy. We are excited to see what they will help us accomplish in the next several years. By the way, that math teacher would have been Mr. Test, in case you didn't guess, so. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, welcome, everybody. I'm sorry that we can't meet you physically, but hopefully that will be quite soon, and welcome to the district. We're very glad that you are here. Okay, last is the presiding officer commentary. A couple of things. We don't have a board member liaison district activity to report, to enter into the record. That's no surprise, given the time of year coupled with the pandemic. So we have nothing to, on that, just a couple of minutes, though, I do want to devote to mentioning that we are going to have an upcoming WASBEE deadline for WASBEE resolutions. I will be bringing resolutions to the board for your consideration at our next, in our meetings in August, because then we'll have it on the committee meeting, and then vote, vote there, and then vote for the regular meeting. I will be bringing back the resolution that did not succeed. If there's one thing I believe, it's if at first you don't succeed, try, try again. And I don't know if everybody saw the news today, but I do think it's quite timely. And I will share with you that I've had board members from four different school boards with, in the state, reach out, wanting to join in, asking if we were doing that. I said, I've got to bring it to the board, we'll see where it goes, but there's interest, and so I will be bringing that back to the board next month. The other resolution that I will bring will just be around Act 31, and I'll be, we talked about this last year, and the fact that there's a compliance, but I'm going to reach out to WASBEE and then to David O'Connor at DPI, and work on some crafting of language as it relates specific to that. So I want to put that out there for you to be aware, that will be coming up. And then for any other board members that want to propose resolutions for WASBEE, I think it's really an amazing thing that if we can use our collective voice to improve educational policy in this state, we should do it. So if other board members have things that you think this is something that would be appropriate for a resolution, please try to work on that and bring it to the next committee meeting next month. So with that, I am seeking a motion to adjourn. Teresa's got a first from Teresa, and a second from Beth. I don't believe that we need to roll call vote this, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, good night.